All right.
Rayanne, I like your background.
Oh, I just changed it.
We're live on YouTube now, so we gotta get, there's a couple people still in here.
Hi, my hail is here.
Got you, John.
Thank you.
And, um, who, who just called in from Old Olson, is that you, Carrie?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Kelly's also on on this one.
She's also on, I just, yeah. And three nine six one, I have Dex over here, too. And, uh, I'm assuming this is Chief Arzab. All right, um. Domingo, I guess it's all you, it's seven oh one.
All right, we'll start, I just have to read this statement that I'm required to read prior to the meeting, and I'll start with the following. On June the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I've determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting would be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a forum. Prior to the commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified and can see and hear one another. I further find that the physical presence of the members of this public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster, and more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion and roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice of these arrangements have been given accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and has adopted by mayoral order. Alderman Bill Farrenwall of this body is physically present at our regular meeting location. All votes shall be conducted by roll call, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Can you read the, uh, title, please, of the agenda?
Sure, this is the City Council of the City of Blue Island, Illinois, held remotely on Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty at seven PM as permitted by Executive Order twenty twenty oh seven, signed by Illinois Governor Jimmy Pritzker on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Are registered remotely, download the Zoom app or call three one two six two six six seven nine nine, and the webinar ID number is eight four nine one six eight zero seven four four three, with a password of one two four one four four.
Thank you. We're gonna call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law. I'll need a, I'll need a roll call, Mr. City Clerk.
Sure. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here, Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here, Bellato.
Here.
Lotto here, Casadus.
Here.
Casadus here, Rita. Rita absent, Donahue.
Yes.
Donahue here, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald here, Hill.
Here.
Hill here, Mac.
Here.
Mac here, Carr.
Here.
Carr here, Zelman.
Here.
Zelman here, Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here, Stevo.
Here.
Stevo here, thirteen present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, we'll move on to number four of the agenda. Presentation of general proceedings. I'll need a motion and a second to approve the City Council minutes for the date of July the sixteenth, twenty-twenty.
Donahue moves to approve.
Alderman, Donahue motion second by?
Second.
Alderman Carr, second. Uh, roll call, please.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to have my vote, my votes counted and recorded, even though I was disconnected. On page four, if that's possible, on page four, under motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Alexander, to approve the interfund transfer from unrestricted and restricted accounts, I would have voted no. And on the motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Clearwell, to approve the payroll, I vote, I would have voted aye.
All right. We'll make note of it.
Is there clarification on that, uh, Kelly or Carrie?
If I, I'm not quite sure that, I heard what Alderman Stevo.
I'll recap, so.
Requested at very outset. He asking that he.
I'll recap for you, Carrie. Um, he lost his connection, he lost his connection, was unable to vote for two items. You would like to have his vote be recorded. Do I do that?
Mark, let's, Bellato. It, no, his vote goes along with whatever the prevailing vote would end up being. Um, can't record the vote later.
He, 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 his vote was not recorded at all, this is Carrie.
He was, he was absent.
Whatever, whatever, if I may, please. Vote was not recorded at all because he had lost his connection. All I understand, Alderman Stevo to say is that he would like the minutes to reflect that if he had voted, that would have been his vote. It does not have to be part of the official vote, but it does not get recorded as though, or an abstention, abstention along with the majority.
So I will, I will reflect on this meeting's minutes that he would have voted accordingly.
That's all you have to do, City Clerk.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second, uh, I need a roll call on number four, motion to approve City Council minutes for July the sixteenth, twenty-twenty.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Casadus.
Upstain.
Casadus, Upstain, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, twelve ayes and one abstention, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, could you, Mr. City Clerk, read number five, please, regarding public comment?
Sure. Public comment shall be by email only. Persons interested in making a public comment must email their public comment to arhoyser@cityofblueisland.org by July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty at six PM. Email public comments received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting by City Clerk Randy Hoyer.
Do we have any?
I have four items.
Okay.
Okay, the first one is from Rochelle Arasco, neighborhood watch group thirty-seven, uh, honorable Mayor Domingo Vargas, Tom Holly, Mayor Proton, Randy Hoyer, City Clerk, Carmine Bellato, Treasurer, present city council members, fifth ward alderman Mike Mac and Johnny Ringo Hill, Eric Alvarez, P E Robinson, Engineering, Jim Postrel, Supervisor of Public Works. We, the members of Watch Group and citizens of the City of Blue Island, are concerned about the following things that seem to be neglected. One, flooding in the area, which is no surprise to many living, the nightmare. Every time there is a mild rainfall, citizens are tired of basements flooding, expecting three to four inches of water to tolerate. There is mold running foundations. Property value is lowering slowly every day. It is impossible to sell your home that floods, so you are helpless. The rain gardens was supposed to alleviate the problems of flooding. We know they were done with good intentions, but failed to get the job done. Contractors have five years to maintain them. The responsibility was the City of Blue Island and Public Works. The rain gardens are a disaster at their present time. You would think that one is in a jungle upon seeing how unkept they are. There are reports of bees, snakes, rats, raccoons, opossums, rabbits, et cetera. Garbage is thrown into them daily, cans, your McDonald's bags, discarded paper plates, spoons, et cetera. When will MWRD approve of diverting back from parkways? We have been told they must approve first and letter have been sent to them. Rain gardens be attended to ASAP. They are not helping the flooding. Resurfacing of Longwood Drive was a disaster and the bump outs. Water is supposed to drain out into the bump outs and in the rain gardens, and water is standing in the street instead. Cars are driving in puddles of water after a rainfall. We have pictures to prove it. Resurfacing of Longwood was not done correctly in alleys, substandard materials used, cutting corners for more profits. Corrective action is needed for City Engineer Eric Alvarez of Robinson Engineering, Mr. Eric Niagu of Antero Group, and Mr. Jeffrey Eckengrem, CFMS Senior. Project Manager of Antero Group, Deconstruction Incorporated, Coal City Illinois, J.J. Newell, Concrete Contractor, City of Illinois and Gallagher Asphalt Company. Contract should not be awarded to people that do shoddy work, low bidders. May not be the answer for Blue Island. No more contracts to people who continue to do poor work. Three, there are reports of rats running through the neighborhood. Reports coming from citizens living on Olive Street, behind the gas station on one hundred twenty-seven. When the station was erected, a rat haven was underneath from the old jewel store. A neighbor's cat came home with a blue rat, stuck to its back with a rat on it, wow. A parade of them has traveled to one hundred nineteen street. Neighbors are seeing them in their yards. Please get an exterminator for the area. The owners of the house at one nineteen thirty-four Longwood are not keeping the property maintained as should be. Timely grass cutting, picking up garbage. If rehabbing a place, a place after purchase, a time limit should be done by Building Department as to when it is completed. These eyesores in the community brings down the value of the homes in the community, we don't like it. Four, Corona Real Estate has two houses with their signs in the yard, one nineteen forty-three Washington and twenty-one hundred West Hundred Twenty, Hundred Twenty. Both on the corner of Hundred Twentieth Street. Grass is not cut in a timely manner, causing the neighborhood to look unkempt. Vacant houses should be maintained by someone. We are not about complaints, thank you. And Mark Miller, Special Projects, for getting funding to demolish the house on the corner of Hundred Nineteenth Place, adjacent to the train station. Thank you for getting funding for the demolition of the old Napleton Motor Company. We realize funding is low, and there is no TIF funding for us in the Fifth Ward. We, the citizens of the Fifth Ward, deserve better and are striving to the utmost in having our ward as beautiful as the historic area of town. No rain gardens, well-manicured lines, et cetera. All parties involved must come to the table and find a solution to the problems mentioned. Thank you in advance for your consideration, sincerely, Nancy Thompson, Captain Rochelle Arasco, Coast Captain.
Alderman Mike Mac, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I, I toured the areas today, and, and the rain gardens, you know, are, are just deplorable. And I'm wondering, can we get the city just to cut these down?
Let me, uh, let me ask legal, I, I, I have no problem with it, but I just wanna make sure since WMRD also has some say on it, what they would say if we decided to do that, but give me at least a day, or by the end, by Friday, if not, we'll try to address it no, no later than Monday, if, 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 at the worst.
I appreciate it, Mayor, I think that would be a, a, a step in the right direction. At least to hold them over until we get, you know, more guidance on how this is to be handled. There, there's so much control, and, um, I, I appreciate you looking into this.
No problem, I'll try to address it as quickly as possible, thank you.
Hi, this is Alderman Hill, um. I have an appointment with our new Health Inspector. Tomorrow, we will be walking and taking a look at the rain gardens. Uh, we are gonna meet at three o'clock PM. So we will be taking a look at all of the rain gardens tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
I think our new Health Inspector Susan Wagner.
Yes, yes, she is. Anything else, Alderman, if not, we move on to City Clerk, any additional stuff?
No, there's three more. The other three are shorter, though. This is Dave Housley, I am the same Dave Housley I've always been. Half horse, half alligator, a little touched by a snapping turtle. I live in a seventh ward, we have coons, rabbits, opossums, good for cleaning the environment, squirrels, woodchucks, boxers, coyotes, garter snakes, grass snakes, hard bugs, horn toads, chickens, pigs, mice, rats, and coon hounds. Mayor Vargas, how long does it take for problems such as a nuisance, trees on the parkway, and rats in the alley to be addressed by his, by the committees? It should not take over a year. Alderman Clinker has been trying to get a rat abatement program going now for over a year, why? Alderman Stevo keeps pushing for a rat abatement also. Why does the Finance Committee cancel meetings when important issues are on the table? I think you should appoint a new chairperson for the Finance Committee because the present chairperson is on an ego trip and needs to be taken down a notch or two. My choice for Finance Committee Chair is Alderman Stevo.
Okay, let me.
Carol DePaes Green. Together, hashtag Blue Island Strong, face masks, gloves, and food distribution wants to thank our donors. Blue Island Mayor Domingo Vargas, Blue Island City Clerk Randy Hoyer, Blue Island Alderman Fred Bellato, Rayanne Cantello-Zelman, William Cazares, uh, Bill Farrenwall, Johnny Hill, Dexter Johnson, Jim Clinker, Mike Mac, Alan Stevo, retired alderman Nancy Thompson, and Blue Island City Attorney Kerry Horvath. Sanji Brooks, Angelo Green, Dexter Johnson Junior, Marsha Lee, Mike Powers, beloved Community Faith Wellness Center, Dwight the Ice Nower High School, Blue Island Salvation Army, Thirty-seventh Neighborhood Watch Group. Along with a special thank you to Blue Island Police Officer Eric Herrera for setting up barricades. A thank you to all our volunteers, and apologies in advance to anyone who may have been forgotten. Everyone is invited to donate and volunteer, no one is excluded. Our next face mask gloves, hand sanitizer, and food distribution is set for Saturday, August fifteenth, twenty-twenty, from ten thirty AM to twelve thirty PM while supplies last. Location, enter one twenty-seven hundred Sacramento D V E High School. Donors and volunteers only, enter through the Performing Arts West Parking Lot. No questions asked, drive through, no contact. For more information or to get involved, contact Carol DePaes Green at seedupaesgreen@icloud.com. This is a resident, organized, not city-sponsored, or Blue Island taxpayer-sponsored event.
Could I have the date confirmed again, please?
Saturday, August fifteenth.
Thank you.
And last, Marsha Lee. I have been bothered with consistent loud music coming from the basement apartment at twenty-two fifty-eight Hundred Twentieth Place. This has been an issue for a long time now. I've called the police in the past and it stopped for a while. I decided to try to speak with the young man as opposed to calling the police all the time, and today at five twenty PM approximately, he told me, you live next door to a DJ, what do you expect? I told him after one AM is ridiculous, and he said, I'm a producer, what do you want me to do? The DJ's name is Chris Aliva, and his dad is Jesus Aliva at twenty-two fifty-eight Hundred Twentieth Place. There's an ordinance about this, please explain and take note of this as my official complaint, I will call the police again when it starts up tonight and subsequent nights, Marsha Lee.
May I say something, Alderman Mac?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman.
Um, she contacted me this afternoon, I did, uh, file a complaint with the police department to support this. Um, you know, I know she'll be calling, uh, and then she had a question as well. Uh, under the circumstance, she should be calling the non-emergency police number, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, thank you. We'll look into this one. Go ahead.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, we move on to report of city officials under the mayor's announcements. Uh, just briefly, to everyone in Blue Island, the business owners, residents, all proprietors, again, to continue following the CDC guidelines, Governor Pritzker's rules and regulations, as you've seen, and you see in the news every single day. Uh, not only the numbers in Illinois are going up gradually, but the states around us, now I think they've included Wisconsin as being one of the quarantine states, and now New York in the East Coast, uh, cities have put Chicago as being an area, their residents from this area should be quarantined if they decide to go to the East Coast. So again, uh, a message did go out from my office, me personally, uh, and it's on our website, it's on Channel Four, there's a hard copy that basically all the owners or businesses in Blue Island should have in hand as we speak. Uh, we are looking, both myself and our legal department, on issues that have happened within the last couple days. We're gonna be reviewing, if need be, we will file charges appropriately and consistently. So that's all I have, uh, City Clerk's business.
No business.
Any bits?
No bits.
Uh, City Treasurer, I guess we'll go. Uh, number one's approval of interfund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. I'll need a motion and a second if there's no question.
Donahue moves to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second, Ed Bellato.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, uh, could, uh, Chairman of Finance, Don, you give us the amounts that are being transferred?
Can he repeat himself, I didn't hear his full question, I'm sorry.
Could you give the, the amounts that are being transferred?
Sure, one second, so. The amounts that are being transferred total six hundred and twelve thousand sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Any other questions, Mr. Stevo? Alderman Stevo?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call, please.
Hey, Alderman Stevo, you're welcome, too.
Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman. Rayanne?
Aye.
Aye, Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Uh, no.
Stevo, no. Eleven ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to cash collection, we streets report, we need no motion for that.
No.
Um, or do we?
No.
No, and then no treasurer's announcement. Uh, we move on to committee reports, Committee Development Committee.
Mayor, we have one resolution, twenty twenty dash zero two eight, Resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, supporting a class eight real estate tax assessment application for the property located one twenty-six twenty-five Southwestern Avenue. It's the new Dollar Tree, we made some requests um, to grant this, the, I, I, last I, I seen, um, they did most of the requests. However, I've been out of town, I'm not sure if they completed this, and I'm not sure if anybody is on the line that can answer if they've completed this between Howard or Mark. If they have not, um, I'm willing to hold off on granting this.
All right. I don't think Mark is on the line, I don't know if Howard's on.
No.
No.
Randy, would you know offhand, or?
I have no idea what the, what the requests were and how they were presented, and if they've, what they've completed for them, I don't, I'm sorry.
Final, finalizing, closing off the cul-de-sac in the back, um, tearing down some of the bad trees, which they did, I do know they're not gonna plant the new trees until the fall, for, uh, recommendation from Val Quixote.
Alderman, they did do the cul-de-sac, I did see that.
You did? Okay, well, that, that was the one thing I didn't see myself, so then I guess I'm okay with.
If, if it's the new fencing, it's new fencing all the way around, yeah. Yeah, they did that.
Then the trees are gonna come in the fall and, um, and the parking lot improvements, the sign came down. It was a laundry list of stuff, they, they've complied with everything, though.
Alderman, they did plant three new air greens on Hundred Twenty-seventh, that, that's part of it. And I did notice some in the back, so maybe they have complied with it.
I'm fine, I'm looking for a motion then for this.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Alderman Carr, second.
All right, if no questions, roll call, please.
Any question?
Go ahead.
Uh, Alderman Bellato, can you tell us how much they'll be saving out of this, uh?
Not offhand, Alderman Stevo, I guess that I've been out of town, but I'm fine if you wanna amend the motion to table.
Just, just make, make this, uh, announcement to the Alderman, remember that property has been vacant for so long, and it took us, um, hell of a time to get somebody to be interested, so just keep that in mind.
Domingo?
Yeah, so there's a roll call.
Okay. Johnson?
I'm, I'm sorry, is?
Motion to approve the, the class A for, uh, Dollar Tree.
Yeah.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much to all the Aldermen, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor.
Sure.
Mayor, I just, just, uh, I know, I do not know the dollar amount like Alderman Stevo asked, but I do know they're, they're contributing.
Yes.
Alderman Bellato, this is Carrie, I just found the document that was presented by, um, I believe it was Kane, yes, Kane McKenna with their memo at the time when your committee was meeting, and the taxes on the property are, as the current taxes would be estimated at forty-five thousand dollars. With the class eight, they would be reduced at least initially by approximately sixty percent to approximately eighteen thousand dollars per year, so the savings in real estate taxes would be just about twenty-seven thousand dollars, I just found the memo, it was prepared in June, uh, of twen- twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, it's a class, it does lower it after a period of years, it returns back to what it was, if not greater. But the sales tax, they did not ask for any sales tax rebates or any rebates from any TIF, which is in a TIF there, but we're collecting the entire sales tax and also the one percent towards the business district, and the property tax, though, now that it's a, um, a non-vacant property. So we're collecting more than what we're giving, um, after a few years here.
Yeah. Thank you, congratulations to all, congratulations to all. Uh, anything else, Alderman?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Finance Committee?
Alderman Bellato, when, when is your next committee meeting, the reason I ask, I, I had a conversation with, uh, the lawyer that represents the property owner, uh, the, the owner of the parking lot on Western Avenue, where the city's lot is also located between Union and High. And I wanted to discuss with your committee uh, proposal that he had presented.
No problem, it's always the second Wednesday of the month, so we're looking at August twelfth right now.
Okay, fine, and then I'll let you know with an email what he was discussing, okay?
Thank you.
All right, Finance Committee?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, uh, it's a couple items, uh, to present in front of us. First, I have a motion for approval of payroll for July the tenth, two thousand twenty, uh, to the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You got a motion, do we have a second?
Bellato, seconds.
Uh, if no questions, roll call, please.
Johnson. Dexter. Dexter on payroll.
No, absolutely.
Johnson, no, Alexander. And that, you're on mute.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman?
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo?
Aye.
Stevo, aye. One no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next, I have a motion, uh, to approve accounts payable for July the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. This is in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You got a motion? Do we have a second?
Balado, seconds.
Uh, any questions?
Fernwald, a couple, I think, simple questions. Okay, just a couple simple ones, I think, just to clarify. On page, uh, Calumet City Plumbing, uh, emergency water service line repair, I assume, and I want to make sure that wasn't a private individual's water line, it was the city's water line.
Superintendent Postle, you're on the line. Can you clarify that for us, please?
Um, Alderman, can you say the question again?
Yeah, Jim, uh, there's this, uh, item for Calumet City Plumbing to, uh, sixty-eight hundred and fifty-five dollars to repair a line at one-two-seven-three-four Honory Service Line. I just want to clarify that that's not a-
Yeah, no, that was, that was in a public right of way.
Okay.
Um, that was our end. It was up to the Buffalo Box, and, um, the reason we had to call Calumet out is because we had to tear up the whole pavement over there, because it was, um, we were working on the one side of the street, the main side on the other side, so they were able to push it through, auger through.
Okay, thank you. And, and one other question?
That was definitely, um, in the public right of way.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Uh, one other question on page seven, um, just a very large item. I just want to make sure I understand what it is. For Insi- Institute Form Technologies for a total of two hundred and seventy-four thousand and change.
That, that would be directed to, um, Eric Alvarez from, uh, there you go, Eric.
Hi, Alderman Fernwald, this is Eric Alvarez, Robinson Engineering. The Institute Form invoice is for work completed lining the sewers on Canal Street, Grove Street, and sewer televising and cleaning in the north central neighborhood, um, last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Can I don't need a roll call, please?
Well, I, Mayor, I have a question. Um, if, if work pertains, I just, I'm curious why, why two attorneys from Olderson and Sturker are on the line today, um, both on the phone call. I'm just curious in regards to that.
Well, in, in that regard, we, we are both interested in the business of the city. We only bill for one individual to be on the line this evening. The billing will be from Kelly Burke. However, we both want to make sure that we stay apprised of what is going on in the city of Blue Island, because it is important to, not only to you, but to us as well as your attorneys.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the accounts payable, Your Honor.
Okay. A motion. We have a second?
Balado, seconded.
All right. Uh, roll call, please.
Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Balado?
Aye.
Balado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye.
I'm aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, aye. Clinker, or excuse me, Holly?
Aye.
Oh, I looked up and saw Clinker's phone ringing, but Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman?
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker?
I'm going to be an aye and sorry for the confusion about I was on mute. Yeah, I know, it's wrong.
Clinker, aye. Stevo?
No.
Stevo, no. Eleven ayes and two nos, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, next, I have ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty dash zero two seven. It's an ordinance of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the City of Blue Island, uh, Blue Island Fire Department in connection with enhanced rate transportation service. Um, just real quick, I just, did this, Alderman Clinker, did this go before Public Health and Safety yet?
I do not think it did.
You know, you know what, Alderman, I think this is the one that they wanted to be pulled from the, uh, agenda, because it has to go to another committee.
I even, I, I didn't see that. Cause I was going to ask for a motion to table this, if that was possible.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's, I think that's the intention, that they wanted to be pulled, so that one won't go.
You want to not call, or do you want to table it?
Uh, we don't call it. Let's just move on.
All right, thank you. Moving on, I have, uh, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty dash zero two nine. It's the Resolution approving and authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the McCon County Law Enforcement Training Center to provide City of Blue Island with two committed training positions and the three annual police academy training classes conducted by the MCL ETC. This came to finance yesterday. This would guarantee us at least, I think it's three spots in their police training program. If Chief Arzad's on the line, I'm sure she could explain that better than I can. So Chief?
Yeah, thank you, Alderman. Uh, this is Chief Arzad. Uh, this will reserve, uh, two spots, uh, for the Blue Island Police Department, uh, for each academy class that Macon County has. Uh, if we are not hiring at the time, we can go ahead and tell Macon County to release those two spots in case other departments need those spots. That's the only, uh, commitment to us, uh, in this memorandum of understanding.
All right. Thank you, Chief. So do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Donahue will.
And do we have a second?
Fernwald, second.
All right. If no questions, I'll need a roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Balado?
Aye.
Balado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman?
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo?
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, and then finally, I have, uh, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty dash zero three zero, Resolution approving law enforcement agreement with, uh, Lexus Nexus Cop Logic Solutions, Inc., licensing the City of Blue Island Police Department to use Lexus Nexus eTrash Report Motor Vehicle Accident. See, that's thirty-five kind stats. Wow. But I'd like to make a motion to approve that. Uh, again, this was, came to finance yesterday, though. Uh, Chief Arzad did a really good job of explaining it, so I, I'll let Chief Arzad explain what exactly this does.
Uh, this, yeah, thank you again, Alderman, uh, Chief Arzad. Uh, this, this program was brought to finance and let, uh, and Public Health and Safety back during appropriations. They asked me to stand by on it for a little bit and bring it up again, so I did. This is an online, um, it's a, a online traffic crash reporting instead of handwritten reports. And it also has a component that will also send it directly to the Illinois Department of Transportation, which we are mandated to report. And, um, and it also has a component that we can enter in our, our EMS reports for police reports to get them automatically redacted, um, before we release those, uh, for people that are requesting them. And people would just have to pay online. Uh, what happens on a traffic crash is the drivers of the vehicles will get a card, uh, that has the Lexus Nexus information and the report number. And the easiest way to get a copy of the report is to give that card to your insurance company, have the insurance company pay for the report, and you get your copy of report. Uh, there's a couple other options in case people want to do it on their own, uh, but this is, uh, to get back, uh, to getting better technology, uh, get, get away from writing, uh, crash reports, and it also saves a lot of time for the officers on the street.
Thank you very much, Chief.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Mayor.
All right. You got a motion? Do we have a second?
Alderman Hill, second.
All right. Alderman Hill, if no questions, roll call.
Um, I, I don't have a question, Chief. This is, uh, Alderman Johnson. But if the people, if, uh, the people who need to still get their reports the old-fashioned way, Chief Arzad did let them know that they could still go get it the old-fashioned way, the ones that's not computer literate or whatever.
Correct. Yeah, they can still come to the station and pay, pay the fee at the station, and then we'll print it out for them.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you very much, Alderman. You got a motion? We have a second? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Balado?
Aye.
Balado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman?
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo?
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Your Honor, that's all I have. Our next meeting is August the third, two thousand twenty, at six P.M. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Thank you. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yep. Uh, we had a meeting on June sixteenth. I have the minutes for that, so we called the order at six oh two P.M. Present were Alderman Fernwald, Johnson, Casares, Clinker, Hills, Carr, and Stevo, along with Chief Rita and Chief Arzad. Uh, no, nobody was absent. Under Citizens Concerns, we had two emails. The first one was from Sandy Earth, the resident, sent an email urging the city to enforce, enforce fireworks laws in our community. Second one was Karen Pace Green sent an email regarding the disbanding of the police department and the holding of police accountable. She also demanded the city provide proper funding to upgrade EMS service to ALS. Under Fire Department Business, Chief Rita presented the May twenty twenty report. He stated there were two hundred and seventy EMS responses, one hundred and thirty-nine fire responses, thirteen auto aid, and two mutual aid responses during the month of May. Medical reimbursement collected forty thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents for the year-to-date total is one hundred and ninety-two thousand six twenty-five point four nine. Fire recovery collected one thousand forty dollars and eighty cents for the month. The year-to-date total is ten thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. False alarm fees collected zero for the month. The year-to-date total was seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. Under cause of interest, Chief Rita reported the department was busy with fires. Uh, they responded to the following calls. On May first, they had an apartment fire at one-two-seven-two-four Lincoln. On May twelfth, they assisted Riverdale with a structure fire at one-four-one-zero-one Stewart. On May thirteenth, they went to one-thirty-four forty-four Mozart. They structured fire, which is a small electrical fire. May twenty-third, they went to one-two-zero-zero-seven Elm Street for a structure fire, and on May twenty-third, they assisted Payless Park at a fire at forty-three Old Creek Road. Um, under general information, Chief Rita reported he's continuing with the COVID-nineteen Task Force and is informing elected officials regularly. Uh, PPE supply is holding up. Mavis Twenty-two has submitted a regional grant to FEMA for PPE, and the chief has established a labor management committee with the union. Truck twenty-one, twenty-one fourteen is still out of service. The ladder is fixed, uh, now has a thermostat issue. Marine Two is in the water and has a new TARP. Uh, page two, fire prevention is being limited, but has begun again. Pre-plans are halted unless absolutely necessary for occupancy loads due to the whole COVID thing. Chief presented his monthly training report, which showed five hundred and fifty-nine point five total hours for the month of May. Chief Rita completed the Health and Safety Officer class. He's meeting with acting officers to assess what needs they may, may have in regards to training. Training Officer Matt Suckus attends Mavis Twenty-two Training Officers' meetings, and they're working on upcoming auto aid drills. Chief reported overtime cost of fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents for the month. There were no seven G-hours that month. Alderman Stevo asked how much money has been collected in the foreign fire tax funds. The check usually comes in October, so they haven't received anything yet. Alderman Stevo asked how many COVID patients in Blue Island have been hospitalized. The chief stated he did not have that number. Alderman Stevo asked about the status of the hospital. Uh, Chief Rita said he's met with representatives from the group running the alternative care facility. They're currently in a holding pattern and are ready to receive patients if the need arises. Under Old Business, Chief Rita reminded the committee about the GEMT program regarding medical reimbursements. He's looking into it and will have more information on it soon. This will bring additional revenue to the city. He is briefing Finance Director Carthen about this program. Alderman Johnson inquired about a cadet program for the Fire and Police. Chief Rita said he had been planning on starting a program in conjunction with the high, high school, but the pandemic has put that on hold due to the school being shut down. Alderman Johnson asked about cultural sensitivity training in the police and fire departments. Chief Rita has this topic in his training program and will start doing more of it soon. Uh, under New Business, Chief Rita had a meeting with a new vendor for ambulance billing. The new company would charge us five percent as opposed to the seven percent we are currently paying our current vendor. This will save, this would have saved us eleven thousand dollars based on twenty nineteen billings. He's reviewing the proposal with Finance Director Carthen. Under Police Business, Chief Arzad reported probationary officer Holloway is in the shadow stage of his field training. Full-time officer Ortega and McSweeney have both retired from the department. Sergeant Nedved is still off with a non-duty injury. Current full-time staffing is thirty-one. Two spots are reserved for new officers at the Macon County Law Enforcement Training Academy for September. Normal procedures have been reinstated regarding vacation, personal, and comp time requests. Normal parking ticket enforcement has resumed as of June first with the approval of the mayor. The various revenue streams for the police department collected sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents for the month of May. There were two thousand two hundred and twenty-six incidents in May. Twelve firearms recovered, one EBSO deployment for the month. There were ninety-five point two five training hours for the police department for the month. Page three, on May thirty-first, twenty twenty, at approximately... Hang on a second. Yep, that's the right page, sorry. Thought I put them in the wrong order. On May thirty-first, twenty twenty, approximately twelve, thirty hours, the department began fielding calls regarding looting and burglaries to Blue Island businesses. Additional staff was brought in from May thirty-first to June fourth to address the situation. Four arrests were made for burglaries. After the initial looting on May thirty-first, all of the protests and demonstrations remain lawful and peaceful. Training for airborne and bloodborne pathogens and COVID-nineteen for law enforcement training is currently ongoing. Also, armed personnel have satisfied their training mandates for law updates, use of force officer wellness, and hazardous materials refresher. Chief reported overtime cost of nine thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents for the month, of which one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents is reimbursable. Uh, two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents of the overtime was the additional staffing that she brought in as a result of the looting that had occurred. The department is researching a body-worn camera program. Estimates cost for everything needed is approximately fifteen thousand per year. Under cases of interest, on May fourth, there's a fatal, fatal traffic cras- crash in the twenty-eight-hundred block of one-nineteenth Street. The victim was walking on a poorly lit road and was struck by, killed by a vehicle. The driver stopped to render aid. The investigation concluded the crash was an accident and the driver was not charged. On May sixth, aggravated fleeing, eluding, and leaving the scene of property damage crashes in the one-two-zero-zero-zero block of Anne Street, the driver was identified, arrested, and charged accordingly. May tenth, attempted murder, one nineteen-hundred block of Irving, domestic dispute, female offender stabbed the male victim. The offender was charged accordingly. May thirty-first, burglary at United Liquors. Four subjects were apprehended breaking into the liquor store. All were charged with burglary, and the investigation is ongoing. Under miscellaneous, the department was awarded the BJA Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Grant in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. The department is adopting a zero, zero tolerance policy on the illegal use or possession of fireworks. Violators will be cited for local ordinance ninety-three point zero one, which carries a maximum minimum fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars along with confiscation of the remaining fireworks. This information will be distributed across social media as a warning to potential vi- violators. Residents are strongly encouraged to contact the police about fireworks complaints and provide as much information as possible, including residence address and violator descriptions. clerical totals, sworn police totals, monthly patrol totals, and incident report totals are also included. Last page. Alderman Carr questioned the Lexible training and how it has been customized for Blue Island's needs. Chief Arzad responded uniform policies in day-to-day operations and needs to go actually, needs to actually go through it for more details. Alderman Carr asked for what the plan, asked what the plan was as far as enforcing the ordinance for the Fourth of July fireworks. Uh, she res- reported excessive use of large fireworks in her ward last year and is concerned for the safety of residents and property. Chief responded that she understands the concern and would need to call people in for overtime to enforce it. She states fireworks violations are happening everywhere. She went on to say we have to take into consideration other more pressing calls and staffing levels. She stated she could bring in more staffing, but there would be a cost. Due to protesting, looting, and COVID-nineteen fireworks, are going to have to put on the backboard unless we bring in extra reinforcement. Alderman Clinker, Clinker brought up that he has residents calling who feel that nothing is being done to address the illegal fireworks which occur nightly in town. Alderman Clinker stated he believes that enforcement was the only way to get a handle on the fireworks. Chief Arzad stated the officers would need to catch the violators in the act, which is difficult to do. Alderman Fernwald stated there needs to be a larger effort to get the fireworks off the street. He believes it needs to be handled at a higher level next year. Alderman Johnson suggested residents step up and help the police catch violators, including videotaping the violators. After a lengthy fireworks discussion, the committee recommended the department bring in extra part-time manpower for July second, third, and fourth specifically for fireworks enforcement. Alderman Clinker would advise Mayor Vargas, Finance Committee Chairman Alderman Donahue, and Chief Arzad of this recommendation via email the next day. Under New Business, there was none. Under Alderman Concerns, Alderman Fernwald asked about a potential lawsuit that was brought up at the last council meeting and was looking for an update. Alderman Clinker responded that attorney Horvath was looking to get- Alderman Clinker responded that Attorney Horvath was looking to get a copy of the lawsuit since it hadn't been served on the city yet, and will update the council when he has more information. He also requested the committee start looking into how policing is changing and make sure we are being kept current. Alderman Clinker will email all committee members asking for agenda items at least a week before future meetings. Alderman Johnson requested a Public Works Department, requested the Public Works Department have a second in command in case Jim Postrel is unavailable. This was referred to Municipal Services Chairman Carr for her committee. He also requested a community organized, organized police review board be set up to work hand-in-hand with the committee and the police department. He also stated recycling is not being properly picked up in the first ward. He reported missing garbage cans as well. Both were referred to Candace Carr for Municipal Services to take care of. He requested that the committee recommend all flags be flown at half-staff for Juneteenth. He advised of VI strong event that was going to be held on June thirteenth and thanked violet, I'm sorry, thanked volunteers and stated they would be hosting more events in the future. Alderman Stevo stated we need an emergency room and we need to work towards getting it reopened. He also asked that the city begin a ratification program ASAP. A motion was made to adjourn at seven nineteen by Alderman Carr, second by Alderman Hill. All in favor, motion carried. Our next meeting then was scheduled for July twenty-first. We had that last week. So our next meeting is actually scheduled for August eighteenth at six P M. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Thank you. Uh, Municipal Services Committee?
Uh, sorry, um, Mayor, I, I have a question for, for, uh, Chairman Clinker. Chairman Clinker, you stated that, um, we had got a, received thirty-three thousand of, or something of that nature, uh, for the coronavirus aid. Was wondering where that would be going and how would it be used? And, um, I guess I, this next question is for, um, Chairman Carr, but I can wait.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, if Chief RZAB's still here, I'm gonna let her talk about that. I, I don't have that actually in front of me, Dex. I'd have to actually pull out more information. I know it was used for anything that was related to Corona, uh, stuff. I know they were using it for, you know, disinfectants, cleaning the police station. Chief, are you still there?
Yes, I am, sir.
Can you go ahead?
I don't, I don't, I don't have that itinerary, I don't have that, uh, list of items in front of me right now, but offhand, it's going to pay for, um, the decontamination of the police department on that first day, uh, when it was shut down. And, uh, we're upgrading, uh, things in the department, uh, for health-wise and, um, sanitary needs, uh, more PPE. And we're also gonna get a couple of UV machines. But yeah, it has to, it has to be all, um, coronavirus-related for the police department. Uh, those are a few of the things I can remember offhand that we're using that money for.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. Uh, Municipal Services Committee?
Hi, yes, Your Honor. Uh, we held our meeting on July the fourteenth. Present were Tom Nagel, Eric Alvarez, Jim Postrel, Betty Harmeyer, Ted Ruthenberg, Alderman Fernwald, Alderman Meck, Alderman Stevo, and Alderman Carr. Absent was Alderman Rita and Bob Jackson. Also present was Randy Hoiser. The meeting was called to order at six oh eight P M. Under Citizens' Concerns, there was an email from Carol DePayes Green in which she said that Blue Island needs to hire a city engineer as opposed to hiring an outside firm. She believes that this would save the city, um, a lot of money. There was also an email from Ms. Wrangle regarding the golf ball damage, um, to her property from the golf course, and she was looking for a way to, uh, remediate the damage that's being caused. She does live on Elm Drive. Under Public Works, Jim Postrel gave the monthly report from Public Works. Mr. Postrel said bulk pickup has been very heavy. Alderman Stevo asked how many trees have been removed and if the city was staying in budget for tree removal. Mr. Postrel said that the city is currently twenty thousand dollars under budget. Alderman Meck asked about staffing levels. Mr. Postrel said that they could use more staff. Public Works did not hire any summer help this year due to COVID nineteen. Alderman Fernwald made a comment about alley repairs not being a top priority. Alderman Carr asked about a secondary contact person for Public Works. Mr. Postrel said that Julian Donahue would be the other contact person or an emergency people could call the front desk of the police department. Alderman Carr mentioned that she has received several complaints about Lake Shore recycling. Mr. Postrel said that often residents are putting non-recyclable items in the recycling containers, and Lake Shore, Lake Shore recycling will not pick those items up. They leave them behind. There were two handicap parking ordinances, one for one twenty-eight twenty-four Lincoln and one for one twenty-one forty-six Maple. There was a motion by Alderman Meck, second by Alderman Fernwald. All in favor, motion carried. Alderman Fernwald spoke about the issue of parking on Oak Street and on Western Avenue. Employees of Cook County Health Services are parking on Oak Street between Western and Greenwood. Patients and employees are also occupying parking on Western Avenue for longer than two hours. The parking lot at Western and Union is not being utilized and the ownership of the lot is being researched. Mr. Postrel said that additional two-hour parking signs could be installed. But the need for resident parking only was referred, needed to be referred to the Judiciary Committee for an ordinance to be drafted. There was a complaint about the Calseg waterfall parking lot and the maintenance of the growth along the trail. Now, Mr. Postrel said that the city would be maintaining the growth along the trail once the Blue Island section was completed. Under the Water Department, Betty Harmeyer gave a water report. The letter regarding water delinquencies was sent out. One hundred and ninety-six letters were sent and forty-seven people sent in partial payment. A second letter is being sent out both to the parcel payers and the non-payers, urging them to set up a payment plan. Under the John D. Rita Recreation Center, there was no report for the golf course. Um, Ted Ruthenberg sent out reports on the golf course. Mr. Ruthenberg said that the gap between last year's income and this year's income is decreasing. There are three houses on Elm Drive that are complaining about golf balls hitting their property. Alderman Carr said that one email was received from a family on Elm Drive and requested that Mr. Ruthenberg give quotes on netting to protect the properties. Under Robinson Engineering, Eric Alvarez explained the Lochner proposals for inspection of the Division and Chatham Street Bridge inspection. Division Street would be twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars and the Chatham Street Bridge would be seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Alderman Fernwald asked about the rust on the Chatham Street Bridge. Mr. Alvarez answered that the inspection would note the corrosion, but he would ask them to note the cosmetic problems also. Mr. Postrel asked if Division Street would be closed during the inspection. Alderman Stevo asked why the bridges needed to be inspected so soon. Mr. Alvarez answered that it was mandated by the state because of the type of bridge. There was a motion by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Meck, all in favor. Motion carried. Eric Alvarez explained rearranging the crosswalk at Lincoln, I'm, I'm sorry, Longwood Drive and Vincent's Road. IDOT has offered to re-stripe and modify the crosswalk so that it is shorter. There would be no cost to the city. Alderman Fernwald was concerned about losing the parking in front of a few houses. Mr. Alvarez said that a no parking zone would be the responsibility of the city. There was a motion by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Meck, all in favor, motion carried. Eric Alvarez explained the repair of the Vincent's Avenue pump station. Mr. Postrel said that we need to go for, forward with this. There was a motion by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Meck, all in favor, motion carried. Eric Alvarez and Tom NATO spoke about the replacement of the lead water lines and the money available from the I E P A. The forgivable loan offering by the I E P A has been possibly doubled for lead service lines. Alderman Carr said that her concern was that this project only covers five percent of the residents, and the city does not have the money to continue the project once it has started. Tom Nagel said we would fall off the intended use list by December if this was not approved. Alderman Fernwald asked for a clear story of how the location was chosen. Mr. Postrel said there was no report of how the area was chosen and no clear plan, and he does not wish to, to start a project that we can't finish. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Fernwald mentioned the media coverage of the vault and urged people to be more careful of COVID nineteen precaution. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Meck, second by Alderman Fernwald. The meeting ended at seven oh four. Our next meeting will be August eleventh at six P M. I also have several ordinances.
You know, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I have a question really quick regarding those minutes.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Chairman. What in the, I, I missed on the very beginning. You said someone asked a question and Alderman asked a question about the staffing at Public Works. Can you say who that was? Cause I, I didn't hear it at first.
Oh, hold on.
It was right in the beginning of your minutes, Alderman.
Yeah, it was Alderman Meck.
Alderman, alright, thanks, got it. I just wanted to make sure, cause I, I didn't hear the entire thing. That was it, thank you.
Okay. Um, I do have, yes, sir.
Ald, Alderman Carr, because these are all handicaps, you could pick them all at once if you so desire.
Well, I, I do have a, a small issue with two of them.
Okay.
Ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty oh two four and ordinance number twenty twenty oh two five. Um, neither one of these were passed through, um, Municipal Services Committee. I, frankly, I don't have a problem because, you know, these are fairly cut and dried. But I do wanna, um, make the disclosure that both of these are in my ward. So I don't want it to look like I'm saying favorites. I can go ahead and, and group them all together, or we can hold back the other two to go through Municipal Services.
Whatever you feel is appropriate. However you feel. If you want to put them all together, that's fine.
No objection from, I'm on the committee.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Whatever you want to do.
No objection from me, and I'm on your committee.
No objection from you, okay. Alright, I just wanted to make it clear that the, the two that didn't go through the committee happened to be in my ward. Okay, so we have four separate ordinances for, um, handicap parking. Ordinance number twenty twenty oh two three, twenty twenty oh two four, twenty twenty oh two five, and twenty twenty oh two six. Would you like to make a motion for these ordinances?
You got a motion? Do we have a second for all of them?
Alderman Hill, second.
Alright, if no questions, roll call, please.
I, I would like to just make a statement, Alderman Clinker. Uh, once again, to be fair and consistent, I personally think we should hold off on those two until they go through a committee, cause what, what happens two months from now when somebody else does this? And once it's done, we should, you know, everyone should play by the rules. I don't know why they didn't go through a committee. I don't know how they ended up on an agenda without going through a committee. That's my personal feeling, so I'm gonna be voting no.
Alright, thank you all. This is Alderman Johnson.
Alright. You got any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Uh, I understand Clint, Ms. Alderman Clinker's objection. I could move to amend the, um, motion to exclude the two that haven't gone through the committee.
Alright, um, the council did another motion to accept that or go by that one?
Why don't, why don't, Alderman Carr, this is Carrie Horvath. Alderman Carr, why don't you just withdraw your original motion? And then we'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh two three and twenty twenty dash oh two six. I believe those are the two that went through your committee. Is that okay with you?
That's fine. Okay. I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve the four ordinances. And I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty oh two three and ordinance number twenty twenty oh two six.
Alright, thank you. Do we have a second on that one?
Fernwald, second.
Alright, uh, if no questions, roll call, please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi, Bellato. Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, Kazidis.
Hi.
Kazidis, hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fernwald.
Hi.
Fernwald, hi, Hill.
Hi.
Hi, Meck.
Hi.
Meck, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi, Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi, Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi, thirteen eyes on both ordinances, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Our, our next meeting will be August eleventh at six o'clock.
Thank you very much, Alderman.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Lake Shore, I had a problem with Lake Shore also. I called and said I was the Alderman of the sixth floor. The manager called me back immediately. It gave me a cell phone number and fixed the problem right, that night. So, you know, if anybody has a problem with Lake Shore, just you call right away. Tell me you're Alderman Blue Island, and the manager should call you back.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you.
Because, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chief, I got a question as well for, um, um, Alderman Carr. And I did have, I do and still presently have that same issue that, uh, Alderman Zelman, um, talked about. But if you could share that number with the rest of us, I would really appreciate that, because they started out with a two-bucket truck. One would pick up recycles, the other one was garbage. They downed one main truck that's in my neighborhood and they had a missing garbage.
And they put everything in one truck?
Well, I'm just saying the one truck, I mean, the truck that has only one, uh, bucket in the back. One was for recycling and the other one was for garbage. Now it's only just garbage. So they recycle stuff, it's being thrown in the garbage as well. Second of all, they've been missing, missing garbage cans, uh, as well. Um, and the, and the neighbors, of course, calling me and complaining about it. And then next question was, uh, for, um, Alderman Carr to make sure that, um, uh, you know, that we could have someone from, from the recycle place if this doesn't work out. So we can question them and find out, you know, you know, the route, uh, Alderman Zelman says, you know, it doesn't come all the way through. So, um, and my thing was, my thing was for, um, the, um, ALS, it was a question I should have asked Alderman Clinker about the ALS. Are we trying to push into finance and, and do what we need to do for it?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, Dex. We talked about that at last, was that last week's meeting? I, I haven't had a chance to, to email the Finance Department if that's what we decided, and that'll also be in our, our report for next month. But yeah, we're gonna make the recommendation and, uh, like, like we talked about last week, and this will be in the minutes for last week's meeting, when I have those done. And we're gonna try and get Chief Rita to talk to the Finance Committee to see what we need to do to get that ball rolling.
I, I, I really appreciate that, uh, uh, Alderman Clinker. And like I, like I just stated, if, um, Alderman Zelman could get all of us the, uh, phone number for that person in, uh, Lake Shore. Um, that, that, that would be, uh, really great.
I just sent it to Clinker, so Clinker can send it out.
Okay, alright, okay. And, uh, the next, the next thing is for, um, um, I, I don't know if it's Jim Postrel's position to do so. Uh, to make sure that our first responders, uh, at least the chiefs, uh, Rita and, uh, RZAB have the, uh, Mrs. Donahue's number, Ms. Donahue's number.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Judiciary Committee, anything?
Uh, sorry, no report.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any automatic announcements or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Alright, my first question is City Hall, uh, Mayor, your office, is it being remodeled? Is it, is, it was, I noticed it up there yesterday. I wanted to come up there and see everybody, and it was all roped off. Is there a reason or something?
Yeah, yeah, because of COVID, the task force, that that's part of the CDC, we have to have it roped off.
Alright, uh, next question is, um, it kind of, both complaints counteract each other. I've got complaints about the, uh, city stickers being too expensive, the, um, late fees. I didn't know how to respond. I don't, I didn't know what to do about it. It's probably too late to change that. And the other question is, are we gonna do an August sweep? Because there's so many people out there that don't have stickers, so how are we handling this?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure the chief, we're gonna start, I think, in August, maybe even sooner in August, the sweep, and then, uh, I think the fees haven't changed. Uh, Mr. City Clerk?
The fees haven't changed, and, and there are people that, the people that do, there's always a few people that are surprised when they come in to find out that the cost has doubled. If the Alderman want to change the ordinance to not have the fee be that steep, um, I think it's been working well to get people to, uh, buy their stickers. As of July ninth, I think we were up five hundred stickers over the previous year. Um, I haven't really looked since then, so I don't, I don't know how it stands for the rest of the year, but, um, you know, we want us people to buy their stickers.
Uh, this is Jim Clinker. We talked about when they're gonna start enforcing them at last week's, um, Public Health and Safety meeting, and I believe the chief said mid-August is, that's what she's gonna do.
And we also could also, there's that, that, on the website, we could also fill out the form if there's somebody that doesn't have a sticker, correct?
Correct.
Mayor, this is Alan Stevo.
Yes, Alderman.
A motion to put on the next city council agenda, the August 11th, 2020, to allow any alderman in attendance at a committee meeting to speak.
Okay.
I can't hear him. I couldn't hear that.
I'm asking for a motion to be put on the next council meeting agenda, August 11th, 2020, to allow any alderman in attendance at a committee meeting to speak.
Not on public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Let me, let's, I'll address that with our legal department, see what, if there's any, uh, any issues regarding that, but we'll get back to you on that one.
Mayor, it's, uh, Alderman Meck.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a comment, um, you know, I, I try to support local businesses as much as I can, and I would like to remind all the other aldermen to, uh, try to visit and help support, uh, local businesses doing, during the COVID. It, it's very difficult for these businesses, and I'll tell you, it, it's difficult every day, but with COVID, it's, it's making it worse, so let's get out and try to shop and to dine or carry out whatever we can do to help support our local businesses and entrepreneurs.
Thank you very much, Alderman. I totally agree to that. Thank you.
Alderman, uh, I, I'd like to add to Alderman Meck, um, um, statement about the country house that's over in, um, Alfa, that actually feeds our seniors and delivers to our seniors for free. And last time I actually had communications with him, he was like a hundred and seventy-five thousand in, and that's not only just Blue Island, but the other, um, uh, township as well.
We, we do have blessed people, not only in our community, but in surrounding communities and, and the state and the country. So again, we applaud all those efforts, all of you as elected officials, what you're giving back, uh, if you haven't, to your communities, uh, but we have, all have to look out for each other. And again, from what I'm hearing, is the second round could start as early as late August, September 1st, so again, we have to follow all the guidelines.
Can I remind everyone that we need a, a roll call vote to adjourn?
Yes, we need a motion and a second for adjournment.
I have a comment.
Nice announcement.
I have a comment.
This is Alderman.
This is Alderman Casadus.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman, you need another comment?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, go.
I have a comment along the lines of, uh, uh, Alderman Zilman, but, uh, basically, I've been putting a lot of thought into what would happen if the state of Illinois were to revert back to phase three. I'm sure many of you have also done that, but, um, and I'm thinking about the ramifications if it were to, that it would create, you know, our community. That's why I like, uh, I would like Mayor Vargas, Clark, sorry, Clerk Hauser, and the members of the city council to, to work together to devise a plan that can, uh, you know, create a pathway to for, to forgiveness or to forgive late fees or penalties for people that have, uh, that are in financial, are financially affected in a negative way due to, you know, loss of work, loss of revenue, or, uh, or increase in financial burdens resulted from, you know, another shutdown like we saw in March. Uh, and if, and if feasible, um, for the current people being affected as well.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, this is Alderman Alexander. I have an announcement, a question.
Go ahead.
Um, my announcement is, I'm having a community shred day, um, electronic recycling and prescription drug takeback event on August the eighth. Um, time is eleven AM to two PM. The event will be held at the John D. Rita Recreation Center, um, 2805 141st Street. Everyone is invited, uh, bring anything, documents, anything you need shredded, any old electronics, um, that you want to get rid of, any old prescription medicine, you're more than welcome to come, it's a free event. Uh, we are gonna practice social distancing by, um, you just pull up in your vehicle and the volunteers can take everything out, um, and then you just keep it going. Um, my other question, my question is, have you, um, thought about the social justice committee? I brought that up before at the council meeting, and I have not heard any feedback regarding creating that committee.
Well, I've already asked, I don't know if you remember, I had already discussed, uh, some community respected of, of people in the community who could help me as a mayor's advisory group, so that would probably be, I'm edging towards those people. Some are former distinguished aldermen, some are distinguished residents of Blue Island and proprietors, so there were probably between five to seven of those individuals that I'm looking at, and I can probably, within the next couple of days, forward those names of those individuals to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, is the rec center closed?
Yes.
Mayor, this is Alderman Bellato, one announcement.
Yes, sir.
Saint Donatus Feast and Carnival, um, is not going to go on how we normally do it. However, we're gonna do a Pizzarama, August 7th, 8th, and 9th, from two o'clock to eight PM. Twenty-five dollar whole pizzas, just like we've done in the past, we've had Pizzaramas in the past, so it's kind of keeping the spirit alive of our, our feast and carnival for a hundred and fifteen years now. Just come on down on August 7th, 8th, or 9th, between two o'clock and eight o'clock, and it's cash and carry to support the church. Thank you.
Alderman, we can't have a Beefarama, too?
No, no, I think it would be too many people. There's a lot of ideas about putting tents and tables and having other food booths, and I think it would be too many people under what we have going right now, so we're just gonna do cash and carry, just the pizzas, just the volunteers alone, I'm at thirty, forty people, and I don't want to push it.
Got it, all right, all right. Bless you all. Thank you, thank you. Uh, we, if not, if there's no other questions or comments, I need, we have a motion, a second for adjournment?
Motion.
All in favor, or unless we need a roll call, City Clerk?
We do need a roll call.
All right, roll call, go ahead.
Johnson.
Um, I guess I.
Okay.